So be brief, let's go to the next slide, Lisa, when you get a chance. This, many of these task force members will look familiar to members of the PMZ. Several of them are members of this committee. And as you can see, we had a strong group, not just of regular task force members, but also alternate members. And you can see them there. And we are blessed to have a number of them on the call tonight. We did go through forty-five meetings to date of the full task force, as well as a number of subgroup meetings. Probably that many is, if not more, that many more of subgroups. Go ahead to the next slide.
Can I interrupt you, Walter?
Yes, please.
We have two committee members trapped in attendees. Can Lisa get them out, please?
Great call, Tammy. Yep, thank you. Lisa can do that.
I was able to get one. Katie is not, I can unmute her, but she'll have to be an attendee. I don't know what the issue is with the link.
Thank you.
But while you're out, I, this is Dick Kennedy. I couldn't get in at first. They didn't recognize my email address, even though it was correct. But somehow I got another messenger invite and just now and it worked. So here I am.
All right, Dick, good. Glad you're here. Okay, well, just a little bit of background. This is familiar, I'm sure, to all of you. This is an update or a study of the current comprehensive plan, which is approved back in twenty-fourteen and fifteen. I do want to provide a little bit of background on the existing current comprehensive plan. One of the things that wasn't done when the last comprehensive plan was adopted was basically a build-out calculation. So theoretically, if all development allowed under the existing current comprehensive plan were built, were maximized, then the population of Reston would be somewhere between about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand people and about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand people. So there's a difference between those two, a pretty big difference, based on whether or not you assume landowners would go for the maximum density of residential or maximum density non-residential. In a number of places in the comprehensive plan, there's a non-residential maximum and then there's a separate residential maximum. So that's why there is a variation. But this was important background information that the task force received and actually several task force members worked on, working with county staff to get through the assumptions and slogging through a lot of data to come up with those estimates. As everybody, I think, here knows, the comprehensive plan serves as the guide for future development in Reston, as well as other places in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it is really important, hopefully, you on the PMZ committee, recognize how important it is. Basically, as developers come through the process with rezoning applications, they are expected to conform with the comprehensive plan. So that is its primary use, although it also plays important functions for planning public facilities and the like. So go ahead to the next slide. So at this point, we're going to jump into the interim recommendations or summaries of the interim recommendations by the task force. And I'm going to turn it over to John, are you going first?
I believe Charles is going to lead off.
Okay, Charles Kapoor. The mic is yours and I'll pick it up towards the end of this presentation and then open it up for questions.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, supervisor, and good evening, everyone. Happy to be here and help lead through the high-level review here of the interim recommendations. The first chapter, we're taking a look at Planning Principles. Lead author on that was Tammy Patrine. And I wanted to go through a little bit, and you can obviously read the bullet points that are on the screen, but provide a little bit of additional color and context as to the elements that went into this chapter, as you examine that. Among the elements that were key in the writing of the Planning Principles chapter, taking a look at public participation in planning and zoning, you'll notice that coming through in the text, as well as achieving excellence in planning urban design and architecture, looking for environmental stability in green technology, phasing development with infrastructure, looking to achieve a mix of urban and suburban lifestyles along the TSA's, the village centers and the residential neighborhoods, touched upon transforming the metro rail corridor, looking to get a balance between residential, non-residential, looking to achieve Reston as a more vibrant employment center, looking to achieve housing providing for all ages and incomes, creating stronger connectivity and mobility, increasing more quality, high-quality recreation in public open spaces, placing a high priority in health and wellness, and recognizing as a key planning principle in Reston, the dignity and worth of the individual. So that's a little extra context to what you'll read as you examine the Planning Principles chapter in the interim recommendations. John, and then Heritage Resources is the next chapter. And I want to thank Chris Daniels for taking the lead on that chapter. Among some of the things to note as you examine the Heritage Resources chapters, really looking at finding a way to better encapsulate and recognize Reston's rich diversity of known and potential heritage resources and highlighting the opportunities to further identify and consider future heritage resources in Reston, documenting the known heritage resources that we have in Reston and looking at how that factors into consideration for future development. And the chapter also looks to provide a more thorough discussion of considerations and preservation incentives aimed at better incorporating our historic resources into the planning activities for Reston with the ultimate goal of ensuring that our preservation issues are identified and resolved early in the planning and land use process.
Next, thank you. As Charles did, I'm going to fill out the flesh of these, the bones of the PowerPoint presentation here. So the transportation chapter, the team that led that effort were Gary Maupin, Bill Penniman, and I. And one of the things that we emphasized was continuously monitoring and adjusting the mutual impacts of land use on the one side and transportation, because each affects the other, and especially in the TSA areas, but throughout Reston, looking at the role that needs to be played by transportation demand management. We want to strengthen the multimodal transportation by improving facilities and services for active mobility modes, like walking and biking and so forth, and transit also, as well as private occupancy vehicles. And a role to be played by place-making, which makes the paths to and the destinations themselves more beautiful, attractive, and easier to find. And that place-making will make these multimodal modes more attractive. A stress was made on connectivity between, not just between areas within Reston, but also between modes, so that, for example, someone could ride a bike to Metro safely or walk to Metro safely. And finally, an attention to the environmental, community health, and equity dimensions of transportation in Reston. The next chapter, Public Facilities, was led by Charles Colby. And Public Facilities in this chapter covers facilities maintained by local government and by nonprofits that meet critical recreational and social service needs for the whole community. And so it includes, for example, government offices, schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, libraries, health and human services, housing for the homeless, recreation, entertainment, and also the water and sewer systems. So the purpose of the chapter was to inventory what we have now in terms of public facilities, identify future plans for the facilities, future needs based on the growth of our population, and recommend that future development of those facilities are developed in accordance with the core principles in the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please.
Okay, I'll pick up here with land use. Definitely a significant chapter here in the interim recommendations, led by Lynn Mulston and a couple of other chapter leads and a great team there. The land use, the rest of the land use chapter is to provide a firm basis of development going forward that adheres to Reston's planning principles, which we discussed earlier. By, this will be achieved by conveying planning and designing recommendations of the Board of Supervisors to developers, community members, and the staff to facilitate specific implementation and to provide realistic opportunities for Reston's entire community to participate in land use planning and design processes. The Affordable Housing chapter. Affordable housing, looking at affordable and workforce dwelling units for those families and individuals who earn sixty to eighty percent of AMI, assisted housing for those in serious financial need, and expanded homeless shelter and emergency facility for extreme weather conditions, dedicated senior residents for those with lower income levels, and development of what we call the missing middle housing. Expanding the county's coordination and cooperation with government, nonprofit and for-profit entities that are the key players in the provisions of affordable housing here in Reston and in the DC metro area. And the chapter also takes a look at adaptive reuse of existing commercial properties for residential living, using county-owned land to support development of multifamily affordable rental units, expanding the use of private and public partnerships, which would include mixed-income development projects, the creation of a community land trust pilot program in Reston. Next slide, please.
The Parks chapter was developed by a team, especially of Jennifer Justchuck and Larry Butler. And there were two key words, preservation and expansion. So preservations, we want any development or redevelopment of Reston's parks, of Reston generally, and especially of our parks and recreation facilities, to result in no net loss of public parks and recreational facilities accessible to Reston residents. And then because of, again, the foreseen growth in population, we need to make sure that as development and redevelopment occurs, new public parks, recreation facilities, and open spaces be provided in a collaborative way through proper contributions, public support, private donations, without compromising the assets, as we already said, that now exist. And a big stress on a very difficult area in which to handle parks and open spaces, and that is the TSA areas. So development there has to make contributions of facility, recreation facilities, and provisions for athletic facilities and so forth for those people who will live and work there, because they will be using our parks and recreational facilities. The chapter on environmental stewardship was led by Tammy Patrine and Bill Penniman. And it really begins with a shout of pride that from our very foundation, Reston was always designed to be a harmonious integration of residential office and nature. So that it was, everything had a nature dimension to it. That founding vision was boosted when we became, a few years ago, only the thirteenth community in the world to be deemed a biophilic community. That is nature-loving. And so that is, that is an additional area or additional dimension to our desire to be good environmental stewards. And that stewardship is found in a variety of dimensions of the local community. Watersheds, lakes, ponds, stream valleys and wetlands, tree cannibies and native flora, green building technology, including energy efficiency, stormwater management, and so forth, noise control and noise abatement, and also lighting regulations that tamper down on light pollution. And finally, the key role played by transportation and transit-oriented development in preserving nature. Next slide, please.
All right, the next chapter, Public Art, authored by Tammy Patrine and Bill Penniman. The, this chapter really does go out to help articulate how integral public art has been to the culture of Reston and pointing out the diverse forms of art, including performance spaces, that have been and must continue to be a part of Reston's identity and our shared values, and includes our commitment to equitably distributing public art throughout our community. Talks about how all new development is expected to contribute in a measurable way to Reston's public art landscape and identifies public art Reston as playing a central role in promoting, coordinating, and maintaining our public art projects. The Economic Development Chapter, led by Gary Maupin. A new chapter to the comprehensive plan, kind of a new concept as far as comp plans go. And really what the Economic Development Chapter was looking to do was to bring focus on business and job retention and job creation in Reston for both large and small businesses. The vision and key principle here being that Reston is a hub for global and regional business and innovation. And working in this, this chapter really does want to work in concert with the other chapters in the plan to make this vision possible, including tiebacks to housing, transportation, parks and rec, public facilities. And it does support the one Fairfax policy quite closely. The policy's direction and intention breaks down to seven key policies. Number one, to grow a sustainable and diversifying workforce. Number two, to enhance local locational appeal and build infrastructure to businesses, organizations, and workers. Number three, to diversify our economy. Number four, to attract high-value businesses. Number five, to attract new and also to nurture our existing small businesses. Number six, to ensure the economic vitality of the town center, the TSA's and the village centers. And then number seven, to promote high-quality education. Next slide, please.
As Charles mentioned, the groundbreaking nature of our Economic Development Chapter, so also with our Community Health Chapter. In fact, the Community Health Chapter in the Reston Comprehensive Plan will be the first of its kind in any comprehensive plan within the overall Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan. And it's a focus that is increasingly present in cutting-edge communities in their planning. And two of the big, two of the big leading concepts are its holistic approach to community health and its interwoven view of community health. So by holistic, I mean it is not just the physical health. It focuses not just on the physical health of the community, but also on mental well-being and the quality of life of all persons who live, work, and play in the community. The, it is interwoven in that this chapter, though it is a separate chapter, is also meant to be interwoven in all the other chapters. So it is, community health is seen not as some separate goal, but as a goal that is interwoven through all the others. It has various levels at which it approaches community health. Healthcare, healthcare and services, both what we have now and what we will need with our larger population, promoting healthy and active living, supporting healthy food systems, building green neighborhoods and incorporating healthy building principles in where we live and work, and encouraging social cohesion, which is so important, not just for mental well-being, but also our very physical well-being. And a final point is that the role of equity is given special attention in community health. So that recognizes that detrimental health impacts are often disproportionately borne by the underserved and underrepresented communities, including low-income communities and communities of color. So making sure that this, this, this community health is accessible to all. Next, and Walter, now you take over, I believe.
Yeah, let's go back to the earlier slide on equity. There we go. Thank you. So John, thank you for that transition. Also, Charles, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Just to talk a little bit more about equity, like community health, this would be a new feature, new feature in Fairfax County's comprehensive planning process, anywhere in Fairfax County. We certainly have dealt with equity-related issues over the years. I would, I would, in very broad terms, put affordable housing into that category. But in terms of bringing it out explicitly, weaving it through the comprehensive plan, and frankly, including a certain intentionality in the comprehensive plan as development applications are reviewed, to think about the impacts on various communities and the benefits to various communities as well. That's, this is another example of Reston breaking new ground, if you will, in the comprehensive planning process. So go to the next slide, Lisa. And this last one is not yet a task force recommendation. It is being reviewed by a subgroup of the task force. But the concept is this, the concept is should there be criteria that would effectively be required of developers who want to get to the maximum density in the comprehensive plan? In other words, should there be a structure here for developers where they'd be expected to earn density to get to the maximum comprehensive plan density recommendations? So this is, there's some big questions here. Even if there were a system of earning density, what should the criteria be in that system? So this, these are items actively under discussion by a subgroup. It is an interesting conversation, a lot of discussion about distinguishing any earned density criteria from what is already in the task force recommendations. So I look forward to hearing the subgroup's recommendation and ultimately the task force looking at that question as well. So let's go to the next slide, and we're almost through. Actually, go, there we go. The timeline, so this is where we are. We are, as mentioned, the task force has made interim recommendations. There have been several meetings with Reston-based organizations to get feedback, to do the summary that you saw here tonight. And this is also the time that Fairfax County staff is taking a deep dive on the interim recommendations of the task force. I know there are, at least with some chapter leaders, ongoing conversations and discussions between staff and task force chapter leads. This all comes to the task force for final recommendations next month. So once the task force wraps up final recommendations, then we will go full-blown into a community engagement summer, if you will. And during the summer, we'll be looking for organizations, groups, large and small, across Reston, who'd be interested in understanding what the changes are being proposed to the comprehensive plan and getting feedback on those changes, those proposed changes. We're going to see a final staff report published at the end of the summer, and then we're looking at public hearings before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors later this year. So that's the timeline. I do want to just give one more shout out. I don't think his name's been called yet, but our Hunter Mall Planning Commissioner, John Carter, as well as all the task force members. But John's really put a tremendous amount of work into this. John, thank you for everything that you've done. I know you're very familiar to members of the PMZ and just wanted to salute your service and everything you've been doing on this too. So my favorite slide. So with that, Rob, I'll turn it back to you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that are, I guess, more process or more directed at the supervisor, but otherwise, there are a number of task force members here tonight. So as there are questions, I'd encourage task force members to, who have insights on the answers or want to engage in any conversation about it, to go ahead and speak up. So Rob, I'll turn it back over to you at this point.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Alcorn. That was, you know, quite impressive. And I think we do want to thank all the participants in this task force. It's a Herculean effort. There were, I think I read over forty-five some public meetings through this process. I mean, the, just the amount of time that's been put into it, the amount of attention and care cannot be overlooked. And we appreciate here in the community of everybody's efforts. And I think that'll come about. I know I started reading some of the draft language. I think it's about a hundred and seventy-some pages. I can't say that I've gotten through it all in detail, but I'm hoping to at least, you know, kind of get through some of that and provide some, some more specific input as that is open for us all to do and view on the website that the county has for this task force. So with that, I do have the chat open. You're welcome to raise a hand, or if you want to, I can't see everybody's faces in my small screen, but are there any questions for this group?
And Rob, as you invite questions, I'll just remind everybody how to raise their hand. If they're not familiar with WebEx, I know the task force members should be very familiar with this by now. But if you go to the Participants button on your screen and you click on that, you'll see a list of all the participants. And at the bottom of the screen, you'll see a little hand. Looks kind of like that. And if you click on that button, that raises your hand. And then Lisa or Rob or anybody can see it, then you can be called on that way. And as Rob said, there's also a chat function for anyone who wants to put a question in there. So anyway, that's my technical overview. Probably should have said that from the get-go.
No, thank, thank you, Walter. I often forget that. I do see Katie McLean has her hand up. Katie, do you have a question?
No.
There you go, Katie. You were, you were, you, there you go. What?
Hi, it's nice to see you guys. I don't think anybody can see me, but, um, hey, I just had a quick question. And it might be something that's too detailed, maybe to put on the comp plan. But I was just wondering if something could be put in there, or maybe if somebody was going to talk about redeveloping commercial, vacant commercial properties, maybe before, you know, more green space is given to developers? You know, with like everybody now working from home and just more vacant commercial properties, because I know, like, I'm thinking of the Tall Oaks neighborhood that the developers redid, and I thought that was a great use of, you know, a commercial property that was kind of more defunct.
May I respond to that since, Rob, since, from the land use working group? This is something, Katie, that's a great question. And we get that question at every one of these meetings. So you're spot on in asking that. We don't know what's going to be happening with the return to work after COVID-19. There are a lot of companies that are mandating that their employees return to work, such as Google and I think Salesforce is another one that is mandating that employees return to work. So we do want to ensure that we do have the balance of residential and commercial available in Reston to meet the Reston planning principles and the goals that are set forth in the comprehensive plan. But of course, looking at the current inventory of office looking at the current inventory of office buildings that are sitting vacant, there are opportunities to look at repurposing those buildings. And that is something that the Land Use Working Group did spend quite a bit of time looking at and considering. So I think if you've had enough opportunity to re
Lynn, you're breaking up, you're, you're
Sorry, thank you, John. Sorry. I need to move down to my office and hook directly into the modem. So I will do that.
It's working now.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to say that was a great question, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I don't, Tammy Patraine.
To also give a little bit of flavor as to how the Land Use Working Group spent thousands of hours, literally. We reordered the existing format, but we didn't change much within that format. And we are, our emphasis was constantly balanced between population, infrastructure, and jobs. You have to have that population, jobs, and infrastructure possibility. In other words, you don't have any more room for parks? How much can you expand your population, your, your residences? You know, I was very taken at one of the first meetings, I think it was the chamber, where realtors were worried that there wasn't, where are we putting, where are we putting enough housing? We have to look parcel by parcel by parcel to answer that question. You just can't say, oh, we're going to have X more units. You have to tell us where, what parcel do you want this on? It's a very, very complicated process and given huge thought. So I just, I don't know if that helps or hurts, but we really did take into account so many variables and did the best we could. And John Carter helped us formulate, and what we're, what our goal was, one of our goals was, who's going to read this? Is Grandma Sadie going to read this on a Saturday night? Hell no. This document is primarily for staff and owners of parcels to be able to look at the document and see, where's my parcel? What am I allowed to do on it? Where everything for that parcel is conveniently put in one place? So it's not something here, something there. Then, of course, the subject matter chapters give, as, as Charles Kapoor and John Mooney so beautifully summarized, what the concerns are to keep Reston having the feeling of a gem, something that's precious, something that's different. And oh, by the way, we're concerned about climate change. Because if we don't have a, a community that is sustainable, we don't have anything. We're not different from anybody else. And that, if we're not different from anybody else, Reston loses its famous cachet of being a gem and where people want to come. So that's a double-edged sword. Everybody wants to come here, the prices are high, how do we accommodate everybody? You know, it's, it's an esoteric philosophical question, but the land use, the land use group spent hours on all of these subjects. I don't know if that helps, but that was part of our process. Thank you.
So Tammy, to piggyback on what you just said, you know, being on the Planning and Zoning Committee over the years, the things that we see are often driven by the economics. The, you know, there's, there was a wave of office buildings years ago. Now we're seeing a wave of residential, and it's all just driven by the marketplace. And so to try to predict what, you know, what parcels will develop and when has always been so difficult. And, and, you know, we tend to get then a piecemeal approach in development because it's whoever's parcel becomes available, and then for what particular use. And so do you, do you did, is, is that being addressed in any way in this comprehensive plan revision amendment? While, while, you know, we, we can't be in control of the marketplace, but what we, I think, can be, can try to do is get a little bit bigger picture for anyone who's proposing something or developing something to just kind of know within a certain framework of how it is going to fit into the bigger, the bigger, you know, community realm and wherever, wherever it might be placed. And, and sometimes that is often overlooked in, when we zero in on a site-by-site basis.
I will speak to that just really briefly. On the, not in the working, we are blessed, not in the working group, for the land use working group, but on the task force, to have the world's greatest champion of Dylan rights in Reston by the name of Mark Looney. And he is constantly informing us that we cannot control the parcels of others. We can't do that, but what we tried to do is create maps. The information in the maps in the land use section are, there are three or four of them. And they, and we, and there are maps throughout each chapter. But they give a geographical area of what's a TOD, what's not a TOD, what's a non-TOD, what is PRC. You know, so we try to give some intrinsic interpretation so that if a developer really cares to fit in. But as you know, from our work on the P and Z, developers come with a, a viewpoint, and they are monetizing their property to the fairly well. And to suggest that anything we do would interfere with the maximum monetization is not favorably taken. So it's a yin and yang, push and pull. Your point is excellent. If we could get more of a cohesive plan, but if anybody has a suggestion of how to do that, I think Walter and John Carter would love to hear it. I would love to hear it, because that's really what we need. And some care about the future. And right now, there's no penalty for not doing the maximum to save the planet. You know, maybe that's what part of earned density could be. We don't know. We've looked at it, we've fiddled with it, but it's, it's, you're fighting a Dylan state where the, a Dylan state where the property owner has huge rights. And if it's not by right, it's constitutional. Marcus changed his message from by right, we used to hear that a lot on P and Z. Now it's constitutional taking. And so you can't take somebody's property and say that it's going to be X when something Y would give them more profit. That's constitutional taking in his viewpoint. I hope I'm not misstating it. He'll be back, and he'll tell us if I've, you know, told the wrong story. But basically, that's the problem. That's the challenge and how we would, you know, greet and meet that challenge effectively. We need suggestions. If anybody has them. This, this task force group is the most eager to hear answers that I've ever seen. It's a pleasure to work with the people on the task force. Thank you.
So, so Rob, maybe I could help a bit, John Carter.
Sure.
I, I would maybe, Tammy mentioned this, but I would look at the organization of the plan. It, for the first time, we now have a plan that covers all of Reston, the entire area equally. We've never had that since 1962, I don't believe. We, we sort of segregated out areas, the transit corridors, the neighborhoods, other areas. But now we have it all together. And so the way it's organized with the principals first, and then the land use chapter. And in the land use chapter, there's a vision for all of Reston. And then the next thing is breaking down Reston in the different areas. TSA's, village centers, other commercial areas, the neighborhoods. So, so the vision should be fairly clear that way. Then it's also built from the bottom up. So we have a numbers section, and that numbers is based on what each parcel can get, rather than an overall number. And so the, the theory would be parcels taking away from each other. It's built the other way from the bottom up. So each parcel has a recommendation, or at least areas, each of the areas of parcels has, have a recommendation. And you build that all up into the grand number for residential units and commercial areas. So that, that should be helpful to the Planning and Zoning Committee. And then I think it was Tammy also mentioned, it's easy to, you know, a document as large as this, a hundred and seventy pages. And I think the old plan is a hundred and eighty pages, so it's actually shorter by a slight amount. But you should be able to, to zero in on your individual parcel and to get the recommendation. But your parcel is not looked at in isolation. It's, it's within a, a grouping of parcels. So maybe, I, I'm hoping that that is more helpful, or hopefully it will be helpful to the Planning and Zoning and others, whether it's a community member, whether it's a property owner, or whether it's a future developer, whether it's a planning commissioner or a supervisor, to be able to see what the recommendations are specifically, both on the specific parcel, but how it fits into the overall. So hopefully that's more helpful. There also retains the placemaking aspect, and John Mooney mentioned that. So it, it's not enough just to talk about the numbers. It's, it's all about how you make a place, and that's always a challenge to keep working at that. So hopefully that's helpful, Rob.
Yes, thanks, John. Okay, we have a couple of hands up here. Let me go to Richard Kennedy first, and then go on to John after Richard.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank everyone that's made these presentations. I know that there's been a lot of hard work behind all of what was presented. And it, the way you presented is very compelling. Gets a little tricky when we try to work all those things out, but that's, that's part of the process, I know. Three points. First of all, I agree very much with what Tammy said about climate change. The other side of that, I would suggest, is that the county has bragged about the actions that it's taking to enhance and eliminate the, 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 the bad chemicals that we're, we're, we're sending off. Things like, that are important are things the county can control, like school buses being electric, electric-driven earlier than they may have to be. And other, other pushes ahead to, to go in the right direction for climate change. And I, I was wondering if we could, Reston could volunteer to work closely with whoever's heading that up in the county to say that if you want to experiment with trying some things, certainly from what I hear from our supervisor, and as Tammy just mentioned, this is a possible area, and we'd like to, to work in that area as well. Make sure that we're getting everything we can, maybe pushing it more. That's one comment. Number two, when we talk about a developer trying to do extra beyond what is simply required to get the highest levels of density, I strongly agree with that principle. But I thought our existing plan had some of those provisions in it. And I know around the Wheelie Avenue area and certain parts of the town center for the new development, we've had those conversations and pushed a little harder. One of the things they can do is, my favorite thing is to add to the expected number and percentages of ADUs or workforce housing and lower the income levels on those. Those are the, those are the biggest things the Housing Authority is, is going after, is getting to the lower area median incomes. So if we've had any experience on that and how this would be different, I'd like to know that later. And the other thing, I've got to address this to John, our, John Carter, that where do we stand on, the, the county changed its requirements for work, workforce development. And our supervisor, because he was going ahead with this principle, was saying, let's set aside that. Let's look at it specially for, for Reston. And I, I wonder where that is, where that stands, and I, I want to make sure that I'm, we're doing everything we, we can to make that work. Thank you for that time.
Thank you, Richard. Kitten?
Yeah, on the last question, John, I don't know if you want to address this. I believe David Vanel, yeah, David's, I don't want to call you out too harshly, David. There is a, there is a chapter on affordable housing.
Yes, there is. And, and the purpose of the chapter was to try, as I think, as, as, as Mr. Kennedy said, was to expand the number of available units. One of the issues, I think somebody mentioned about repurposing unused office space. Well, there's a, there's a, there's a process by which the county can perhaps do that with some of the unused office space here that would be appropriate and, and convertible to, to affordable housing. And I think the, I think the, the, the other idea of having the affordable housing percentages of AMI reduced, both for rental purchase, rental properties, and also for purchases. Purchases now can go up to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. And I, I, as I recall from talking to county staff, that that's under consideration to be reduced to match the sixty, eighty, and sixty, seventy, eighty percent for the workforce and rental, workforce and affordable rental.
Okay, well, yes, that's very helpful too, because the builders' world really pushed hard on, on for sale units and, and getting into the lower level. So that's going to be, that's a hot issue. And I hope we can do it and find a way to justify it. I think there's special law rules for, for Tysons on, on affordable housing. That makes sense. I think there could be argued that it's true for Reston as well. Okay, thanks again.
This is Bill. If I could just comment on a couple of things Dick raised. One, the climate issue, I thoroughly agree of its importance. And the environmental chapter is intended to try and address the need for climate mitigation and also preparedness. On the idea of our being an experiment, that's an argument we've discussed with the staff, that Reston should not be held back by whatever standards were developed in the past for other parts of the county. But this should be the opportunity for Fairfax to move ahead. Its C cap plan recognized that it is something that has to be done, not just in government buildings, but elsewhere. So here's the chance, and I'm fearful that that's going to get blown away, and it's not going to be. But I do hope, and I do think that this is, given Reston sustainability history, it's the ideal place for it. Another thing is the transit-oriented development area. What, going back to Rob's question. going back to Rob's question also, nominally, the density potential is the same in this plan as it is in the current existing plan, this proposed plan. The maps show essentially the same levels of density. Density in TOD areas is a climate issue because it reduces potential pollution. The the question is whether other provisions outside the land use area, earned density and others are written in a way that will hamper the development, the actual development on the ground. But I do hope that people recall that transit oriented development is a climate measure as well.
Thanks, Bill. John K has had his hand up. John, you want to go?
Sure, thank you, and certainly appreciate the presentation. Complex issue. And many of us live, work and play here. And and many of us also work in the development community. And I've heard from a number of developers, attorneys, other engineers. There's a lot of folks sort of some of the impact these these restrictions, what they do to do the actual development. And I think like I said, I haven't had a chance to really do it yet, but one of the questions that I have is, have we analyzed the impact this may have on the actual development moving forward?
John, your audio was a little off. Can you? I'm sorry. We could barely hear you, and then it was static. Can you just? I'm so sorry. Can you basically repeat the 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 last part of that? You had a question.
Wow, I'm sorry, too. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, gosh, last last few meetings, I've had this fixed, and now I have a technical difficulty. Yeah, sorry. My question is, so one of my points was that a lot of us live, work and play here in Reston and work in the development community. And I've heard from a number of developers, architects, attorneys, other engineers about some of this. And and there's a lot of concern from that community about some of the restrictions. And certainly, it's a complex issue, and and there's already been a lot of time put into this. But the main question is, have we analyzed how the new comp plan may affect the actual development in terms of level of development, quality of development, and whether or not that'll affect the Fairfax County tax base and silver line related items?
From from the land use group, may I answer that question?
Sure, give it a shot.
I'm hoping I I'm hoping that you all can hear me better. I've moved closer to the modem and hooked directly in to the the modem with Ethernet. So so can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I I think that and I think that this kind of mirrors to Katie's question as well. I'll know in terms of, you know, what are we doing with, you know, the buildings that are sitting vacant? You know, but I do think that the land use working group did do an incredible job. And I I've got to tip my hat to Tammy Patraine and Commissioner Carter and Gary Mopin and Jennifer for Just Chuck and Dennis Hayes for all of the the countless hours that have gone into evaluating all of the the different variables that we have to deal with in Reston. But the fact is, Reston is a planned community. And we have planning principles. And I don't consider, with all due respect, John, I don't consider the planning principles restrictions. That's what you buy into when you come to Reston. So I don't consider those strict. That's that's how we are. And, you know, the the planning principles, the design principles, which have been and I'm going to take a jab right now because they have been disrespected by several developers through waivers and modifications in Reston, that we embrace development, but the type of Your audio is bad again.
Lynn, I think we lost you for a minute.
Is not we own. Well, the my point is that the restrictions that John referred to are not restrictions. That's that's what the the cost of doing business in Reston is. We have planning principles, design principles. So, thank you.
I'd be happy, Mike Jennings, to give you what I've heard. I'm not a developer, just a former small business owner. What I've heard is that the development community views some of the changes relative to the plan as exists today as more restrictive and hindering potential development. I've heard some developer, you know, some potential applicants are redeploying their money elsewhere. So there is concern in the business community. It has been expressed in a letter to Supervisor Alcorn that you know, the original idea of development around the metro and all the things there are going to not be as strong with the new language that's being, you know, in interim draft. This is what we're hearing to answer your question, John.
And what would be specific? Give, you know, can your people who are withdrawing, can you name names? You know, can what are the specific issues? Because in that letter that you're referencing, there were a number of I think misrepresentations, maybe not on purpose, but misinterpretations. And if there are problems that we can, as and and you were, you were very vocal and you are on the task force. So you should know, and we've made reports after reports. If there are issues that can be resolved, we would like to do that. But in my wildest dreams, I would never even hint that Reston would not be further developed. It is such a gem, is a hotspot. If you want to come here, we have the capacity that we have balancing population, infrastructure and jobs. So we have to balance that. We have a limited finite square footage, you know, square miles. You know, we're not like Disney that we can and and I don't mean to be insulting, but there is a finite limit. But because it's finite, that makes Reston property all the more attractive. So I would like to know exactly who's leaving, why, and what some of the very explicit concerns are.
As I said, Tammy, I I'm not in those discussions other than being told that this is happening. You know, you know, you know, the guys on the task force who you can ask these questions of.
Mike, you signed the letter. You have to know who's saying it. You signed the letter.
I also think that people have very rose colored glasses to think that they can put up any barriers they want to development in Reston and that people will come.
That's a false. That's a false statement there. Nobody's putting up barriers. We're we've and you were in the task force. We've established what principles were.
Right, I was in the task force, and many of the things that some of us raised that we had issues with were were, sorry, we disagree, we're not going to put it in. Sorry, we disagree, we're not going to put it in. If we're going to air laundry, that's what we have, Tammy. It wasn't. It wasn't a a, you know, very diplomatic, you know, everybody kumbaya thing. But here's our comments. Oh, that was great. Let's see how we can. It's like, sorry, we don't agree. We're not going to put it in.
There's there were votes on every single chapter. There were votes and
They were votes on chapters that didn't include some of the comments. So let's be fair. Let's be
Well, I'm not getting into that because we responded to your repeated the same thing over and over again, and you didn't like what was given. So you kept beating
Some of the feedback was not, it was sorry, Mike, we disagree with what you say, not anything other than we disagree with what you say. And in terms of additional impediments, you know, look at the community health things. Those are additional impediments to development that do not exist today that a developer will look at and say, I've already got to do all these other things. Now I got to make sure there's a grocery store or this or that. I mean, look at it from their point of view. It is additional things they have to do to try to get development.
Now, let me also state that as we speak, the staff is ripping apart chapters. And I was going to talk about this for environment. Even though some of our staff, our environmental staff is like, we love this, we got a specific comment, and I will share it. The Board of Supervisors has accepted the C cap, which is the, I don't really know what the acronym is, but it's the it's the climate change. Very, very basic climate change ideas. But they haven't voted on it. Therefore, we can't put it in our chapter. Well, I want to tell you, those gee whiz, Bill and I attended the C cap last meetings that there were series where the C cap was gone through. They were the most remedial, basic things. Peniman and I had had researched our guts out and tried to make things that were we knew technologically were there, et cetera, et cetera. And they were light years ahead of C cap. And yet, C cap can't even be put in or mentioned because the Board of Supervisors has not yet approved it. So we have wonderful PR in Fairfax County. You would think we were the bastions of equity and climate change. Those are the two stated priorities for the by the Board of Supervisors. The enforcement of that or the putting that into action doesn't exist. And this is an example. How in the world in April of twenty-two do you not have basic rules of C cap? So, you know, we've had COVID. Life has been crazy. The supervisors have been challenged. God knows the population has been challenged. But this is not rosy posy. And the staff is actively going to tamp down a lot of this. So maybe we should have your comments and me answering after we we see how the staff. I'm not going to say this word guts our chapters, but I guess I guess I will. Because we already have a hint, even though the environmental staff that we've been talking to really like some of our stuff. They're frustrated that they don't think we can get it through. And that's C cap thing is an example. So you know.
Tammy, let me let me ask. Charles wanted to weigh in here, I believe. Charles?
Oh, sure. And I I think a fair point just raised just now, if it wasn't mentioned before, that part of this process is the the staff review. So it will be curious to see what what impact that'll have on these interim recommendations. And then, of course, we do have some more public comment following that later on this summer. You know, and I would just say, you know, as we're we're sort of putting Mike on the spot, looking for specifics related to concerns that the developers have. It's 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 hard to, you know, necessarily have that, you know, being able to just enumerate those here. Those are all documented in the recordings of the previous forty-five sessions. And while everything was taken to a vote, anyone that wants to go back through those votes will see how those votes split, and that'll give you some indication of the areas of concern that those folks that represent the business community development side may have on certain issues. Votes would indicate also really the proportion of commercial representation versus not on the task force. So I would say that that would probably be the best way to really drill drill down to where there may be the areas that are most concerning is is where those votes came out.
Yeah, thanks, Charles. That's a good. That's a good point. And and just like any task force, I mean, there's not, there's not always consensus on each issue or verbiage and and there's certainly, you know, points that you know, people just don't 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 come to full agreement on, I'm sure. Bill Peniman, is your hand still up from or is that from before?
Oh, that was from before.
Okay. Yeah, just as Supervisor Alcorn explained, how to raise your hand, you can take it down the same way.
So easy to forget, though.
I I know it is. I forget it all the time. So are there any other questions that the group has? I wanted to go back just quickly to that tabulation on density. I wasn't certain with the hundred and I I forget the exact numbers, but one hundred and twenty-seven thousand and change to about one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Was that was that a number that was in this new in this new plan? Or is that what's envisioned, just going back to the old plan?
Yeah, Rob, that's just a calculation of the old plan.
Okay.
It does go, I would say it's greater Reston, because it does include some property that I think has traditionally been assumed outside of Reston, but is included in the Reston.
Okay, that's what that's what I thought. I and it and it's interesting, the 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 concept of earned density, you know, if you if you go back and look at the comp plan and the way that some of the wording is, and even in the zoning ordinance, actually, there's there's a scale typically of FAR or density, depending on, you know, if you're talking about residential or office. But and and it was always my understanding that, you know, in order to reach the higher scales of the density, typically, you were you were the 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 goal was to meet more of the the policy and 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 the intent and a lot of the aspirations that I've heard tonight is the way it was always meant to be. Now, I think over the years, though, it just everybody shoots, goes for that maximum number, and then they, you know, they they negotiate from there. So I'll be anxious to look at that. You know, I I know that you were saying that was just just being talked about as an idea, but about earned density, but even even in that that kind of sliding scale of density. I'll be anxious to just read that part of the the comp plan myself to see if there's any stronger language there.
Hey, Rob, this is Bill. If I could just comment on that, you you had asked the question about where are those numbers, the hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, depending on whether it's maximum residence. But I've never understood those numbers at all, because if you look at the comp plan, at least for the TOD areas, you know, that's there isn't a range, you know, you within the within the quarter mile, it's fifty fifty, quarter to a half, seventy-five, twenty-five. And so how you could come up with numbers as wide as those, I don't know. But it they're what they are. That's not the projections that were built into the draft, at least as I recall it here.
Okay, thanks, Bill. All right, I don't. Richard Kennedy, is your hand still up?
Yes, I put it back up. I found that button and keep playing with it. My understanding on those numbers that were quoted are the theoretical maxes with respect to the current master plan. But the facts are that almost all of the developers, even though it seems very dense and very big, have not used the fullest amount of permitted in the areas. And we've got an awful lot of committed proposals that have been sent to the Planning Commission and the and the Board of Supervisors that have been approved that are not going forward. And and we can name off some of those in in Reston. And, um, and we can name off some of those in, in Reston. So those, those numbers are, are warning numbers and they're, they've got to be addressed. They've got to be dealt with. But my understanding, and I hear, and I'm influenced mostly by some very senior people in the Fairfax County Planning Division that have since retired, that says those numbers are, are, are never fully all, um, laid out. So, um, Bill, if you're having problems figuring out what the, how to count those things, um, those are tricky issues. Thanks.
Walter, maybe you want to talk about the haircut?
Well, it's a good question, Tammy. One of, one of the things that is probably, um, it's one of the things I'm going to be looking at is, is when looking at buildout, uh, what should we assume in terms of buildout? What Dick just said is true. Um, there are going to be plans that are approved that never get built. Um, there's going to be, there'll be some properties that'll be planned for something and never get rezoned. But there are also, I, I think what we've seen, Tammy, in, uh, and this was the case, I guess during much of the last five or six years, is we did see actually quite a few development proposals come through that was, that were approved at maximum density. Uh, you know, we did see, uh, a number that were, you know, 97% of max density. And, and frankly, uh, a couple that went over, you know, that were at 102, 103% max density. Once you count the WDU bonuses, uh, included. So I, I think it's something, um, we need to watch and I, I think it is. It's imbalance, it's the totality of what the plan is. I want to make sure, at least personally, that, um, I want to make sure that we're being intellectually honest. Uh, when we look at these numbers and we look at the plan, um, and, uh, basically talk about ultimately what uh, is going to happen, you know, and that intellectual honesty, I think runs the gamut from, yeah, if, if we clamp down too hard, we would, you know, put a big damper on development. Uh, but on the other hand, if, uh, if it's too open, then we are going to get max development eventually. Uh, so we probably need to, uh, expect, uh, something in between. And I really appreciate the discussion because it helps me kind of think through the pros and cons of, uh, pushing it a little bit one way or the other. So, um, I expect we may see some sort of, they call it a haircut, Tammy. Um, uh, after this is said and done, to look to see that, you know, it doesn't make sense to assume 100% buildout, uh, with this, that, you know, given all the uncertainties, maybe 80%, 85% is more realistic. But I, I think you can only really make that, uh, conclusion once you see the whole package and understand how it's, uh, how it's read and how it's going to be implemented.
I want to give this a try. If I could, Rob, John Carter.
Sir.
Uh, and, uh, I appreciate Mike Jenny's comment too, so I'm going to try to fold this all together. So looking at a comparison of the old versus the new plan, the old numbers, I will call them, were assuming every parcel develops at the maximum. So now what is the change between the old plan and this, this plan? And so let's just go through the details a little bit, if you have patience. So in the transit corridor, we increased the density a slight bit around Wheelie. Everything else remains the same, particularly these ratios of 50, 50, 50% residential, 50% commercial with a quarter mile, within a quarter mile and 75, 25. All of that stays, uh, that was in the old plan, except for the slight increase in Wheelie. And I, I know we still have to work through all these with the community, so that I'm, I'm just saying where we are to this point. Okay, now the village centers. The village centers were unclear at best in, in the last plan. And I know Fred, uh, Selden tried to clarify that with a memo later. So we, the, the density is now instead of 50 units per acre at all the residential uh, and the commercial area, it's now 20 units per acre, what, uh, for just the commercial area. So there, there's a change. In the convenience center area, no change. Uh, point 25 FAR. In the other office areas, Bowman Green, uh, Home Depot, uh, it, it's unclear in the last plan. So this plan takes the residential out of that, uh, although it was never specified in the old plan. And the last one is in the neighborhoods. So now all the multifamily areas are the same. They're now 13 to 20 units per acre. In the old plan, you had St. John's Woods, that I'm sure many of you remember. And the, the, the old plan upzoned that area. But then by the time it got to the Board of Supervisors, they didn't like that upzoning. So it is now back to where it was to begin with, with a 20% maximum. There are also, excuse me, two other areas, the, uh, I believe it's the Fairway Apartments and the Charter Oak Apartments. It's confusing in the old plan. And so now those are all at the 15 to 20 units per acre. That allows a slight amount of redevelopment because most of those older parcels in those days, nobody, few people ever developed at the maximum. So it would allow some improvements, but basically it, that's our supply of affordable housing. It keeps those the same. Now, the tension with this comes in, and that's the land use aspect of this. The tension with this comes in the other chapters, for instance, affordable housing. Yes, the standards are higher. Uh, I, I believe what David has done is keep the new standards for the neighborhood areas, up them a little bit in the village centers. Uh, and I believe we kept the same in the, uh, transit quarters, although we reduced the tiers. Oh, that's something that, uh, I've advocated over the last four years and it's something that we've accomplished. So not probably a lot of change there. Environment, you, you heard some, there are changes to it. Uh, historic preservation, there, there are now, uh, is a chapter included, which was not included in the old plan. You have some health is, issues and equity issues. So I, I don't know, Mike, I, I don't know if that helps a little bit on what's changed. That may be kind of a high level change, but that's why we're going through the community process now and this summer, which will ferret out, I'm sure, all of those issues that a variety of people, whether you're on the developer side or whether, whether you're on a, an other side. Uh, so if you put that all together, that, uh, oh, the other last thing I wanted to say, in terms of how much parcels have developed, if the ones around the transit station have developed pretty much at their maximum, sometimes a little bit over. You ask, why could they be over? That's because of affordable housing. They get a little affordable housing bump up. But if, if you go farther out, they've developed at lower standards. So the range, and I think John Mooney will help me out a little bit on this. The range is from 66% to, I believe, 107%. So I, I think there is justification, uh, both in theory, but and in practice, that, that the numbers are always, if, if you count this up, uh, parcel by parcel and go to the maximum everywhere, that's, that's probably not reasonable. So another set of numbers is the 110 to 120, uh, which is in the plan now. That gives this haircut of 20% over the maximum. Uh, and it, it changes the land use from the old plan slightly. So that those are, that's the difference. I, I hope this is helpful to Mike and others, uh, concerned about the changes, uh, both in a, in a more difficult way and an easier way. So, okay, hopefully that was helpful.
John, thank you for that summary. That was certainly helpful to me to get, get a little bit better understanding of that. Um, Tammy, do you have a question?
I have a comment. One of the things that the task force did not take up, and I don't think can take up, but maybe Walter can give an opinion. I don't know, I'm not, don't want to put Walter on the spot. But when a, as we all know on the P and Z, when a project is approved, it sits, if it's not built, it sits in perpetuity forever, which is, you know, not helpful to development, frankly. It's, we know the spectrum is coming someday. It's a behemoth, it's, uh, and it's been how long? How many years? A decade at least that that thing has been sitting there? So I would love to see a sunset clause. You have a plan, five years, you know, show some progress, 10 years, it's over. Or, or maybe even less, but that might help the development community, you know, have a little bit more faith. I don't, I don't know. You know, it's, it's definitely a thing and, and to, to, uh, Walter's comment, this plan also has a, a, in a, a leg west that takes from the south of the DTR to, um, Centerville Road, that's included in this. So some of these increases in numbers are because of that. And it's not a huge spot, but it's, it's there. And then there are some squeaky little crazy things that are not in the political boundary of Reston, but they're not in anybody else's plan either. So we sort of got stuck with taking those in. So, um, you know, this is not a pure Reston only thing. We have some little, you know, derivations outside. And it's, um, we did the best we could working with, you know, this thing. So that, those are details that you should know, that we're of concern and, and also work hard on. Thank you.
Yeah, good, good points, Tammy. Rob, if I could just jump in real quick, I, I, yeah, Tammy makes a great point about, uh, the timing of entitlements. And, uh, Tammy, I think it's been closer to 20 or 25 years on Spectrum. Um, sorry, I didn't mean to correct you, but it's been a while.
It's, it's 2012.
Oh, well, but I remember when Spectrum was approved back in 96, I believe. Uh, and, and back then, uh, Lerner was saying, oh, it's just temporary. It's, it's not going to be there that long. And, you know, here we are 26 years later. Um, that's fine. Uh, but Tammy, you know, the only, the, the one way, and I haven't, I haven't had any discussions and looked at Kate's law for a while. But the, the, the one rezoning related process that can put time limits is the special exception. Um, you know, those can be time limited, uh, but, uh, but with rezoning, at, at least, as far as I'm aware, anywhere in the Commonwealth of Virginia, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's, there aren't any jurisdictions that are, uh, have been able to put any time limits on it. It's, you know, I like to say rezoning is a one-way street and Tammy, it can be a really long street too, so.
Well, thank you for all for that. I, I don't see any other questions in the chat. It's, uh, getting close to 8:30 almost, uh. I think we, and we have to get the supervisor back to bed so he can heal from his COVID. So, uh, what, what a champion for coming out tonight, by the way, everybody. Uh, this is, uh, going above and beyond. I, I would have just can't, you know, canceled or called in sick and sent in a double.
No, thank you, Rob. I'm fine. I'm fine. I, I just got to go watch after my wife, make sure she's out. No, it's all good. And Rob, can I just say, can I thank you for everything that you and the P and Z have, have done recently and over the decades? Uh, you know, this is such a, what you guys do is such a critical component for reviewing land use proposals coming into Reston. And, and, you know, the, the continuity and the institutional knowledge that so many of your members have and the lively discussion, uh, you know, thank you. And I, I, I would, uh, very much as, as this public process goes forward on this plan, um, you know, if, if you'll have, uh, have the group back in the summer, uh, you know, maybe to talk about more specific uh, things, uh, I, I certainly would be open to that, but I'll, I'll leave it up to you and, and, uh, task force members if they, if they want to do that. So, thank you, Rob.
Well, no, thank you for those kind words. And I did want to ask, you know, what, what you, I guess what you'd like to see from the Planning and Zoning Committee regarding the specifics of this, uh, you know, this comp plan, uh, change. I mean, obviously we have members of the committee that are participating directly in the task force. But, um, I mean, are you looking for, I don't know, ultimately an endorsement? Are you looking for just this type of dialogue? And if anybody has comments, then where to direct those comments to, to get it in the, you know, in the final drafts and?
Well, ultimately, um, Rob, let me ask you this. What did you guys do, uh, six, seven years ago? What'd you do in 2014? Did you, did you make recommendations on the plan as it, uh, before I went to the planning commission?
You know, I was on the master plan task force myself, and I don't remember that we went and really did anything with P and Z other than to give them updates, just regular updates as we went along in the process. And, and, you know, people would just wade in, just like a normal citizen would at, at the right time and try to get any influence to the, to the drafts. But, uh, but I don't remember us ever taking a committee vote or an endorsement or anything like that. I, I think it was just, we had participation and we all, you know, set our piece at, at whatever times that allowed.
Okay. Well, Rob, I, I just maybe suggest that you, um, um, hear from your P and Z members, you know? Um, and if there seems to be a consensus one way or another, uh, I'm happy to go along with that. It is true that, uh, many of, of, of your committee members are actually very active on the task force. So, uh, there is definitely a consensus, concentric circle here. Uh, but, uh, I, I'm open either way. So, uh, uh, just, uh, let me and, uh, John Carter know.
Okay, great.
Rob, Rob, as I suggested, not, not to create more work, but since the plan is out there and I, I hear that the, the P and Z is going to be very busy coming up, uh, and probably through the summer. Maybe, uh, a look at what the new comp plan says versus the old in light of the individual cases that are coming in, so that we could, uh, I, I mean, that's, that's a lot to ask, but, but maybe a comparison, uh, case by case would be helpful. So, so we could help, uh, those that are skeptical of, of the new plan. And, and maybe if it has some sore thumbs in it, we, we could ferret those out a little more easily. If, if you look at each case as it comes up in light of both plans. So I, I don't know whether you can do that, but it would be an interesting exercise, I think.
Yes, good point, John.
Hi, this is the Kennedy. I, I think, Rob, uh, it would be wise for you to talk with Dave Vanel. Is, is Dave still on here? He, because he, I thought was the chair when this was going in, back in the, uh, 2015 time, timeframe.
Yeah, Dick, um, yeah, I was, I'm not exactly sure whether I was still chairman at the time, but, uh, but I think Rob is correct. I don't believe that, that P and Z as a group um, had anything, uh, formal to announce or to say judgment on the last, uh, you know, 2014, 2015 um, activities. Um, I think we, we, as I recall, we either as a group or independently, uh, certainly several of us were on the, on the, like they are now on those, on those little subcommittees. And, and, um, but, and we weighed in and, and, and all that stuff. But I don't believe that, I don't believe that P and Z thought it, um, their purview to, uh, pass judgment on anything in particular, just to, just to offer either a group suggestion or an individual suggestion.
Thank you, David. Okay, well, I want to thank, uh, again, uh, the supervisor for joining us tonight. Thanks to, to Charles and John and, and those of you on the committee that, that have, have worked so hard at this. And, uh, it was very informative tonight for me and I, I do plan on trying to read a lot of the language that's in the, uh, in the draft and to try to make some comments where I think it's appropriate. And I, I just encourage everybody else to do the same. But there's been a lot of hard, hard work done here and there's still a lot of hard work to, to go until we get to the finish line. So, uh, you know, but, uh, but thank you all for your efforts and thanks for taking the time tonight. I know this was a special meeting and just a quick reminder, we do have a meeting this coming Monday night. Uh, I reached out to the app, one applicant who was supposed to present to us and I, I'll, I have not heard back from him, so we'll see.
It's okay if he cancels. You don't, don't put too much pressure on him.
All right. Well, with that, uh, let's go ahead and uh, say goodnight to everybody and um, and again, thanks for joining tonight. And thanks to Lisa to uh, kind of uh, setting this up and uh, running the video.
Yes, thank you, Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good much. Bye-bye.